Good afternoon, this 12th meeting of the 73rd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, due to us using virtual meetings because of COVID, please note that I'll recognize you by saying you have the floor. Once I recognize you, please state your name and begin to speak. Today's invocation will be given by Reverend David Olson of the First Unitarian Church of Baltimore. Reverend Olson, thank you for joining us. The floor is yours.
Mr. President and members of the Baltimore City Council and engaged participants in our democratic civic self-government, good afternoon. My name is David Carl Olson. I am serving in my 12th year as the lead minister of First Unitarian Church of Baltimore, universalist and unitarian, and am the co-chair of the Religious Leaders Caucus of the community organization Bridge Maryland. It is my joy to invite you to your own human and spiritual core and even to this beautiful space. For over 200 years, our congregation has encouraged its members to live their values in the public square. Our founder, Henry Payson, led the Committee for the Defense of Baltimore during the War of 1812. And our ministers have been active in the establishment of the Society for Moral Improvement that created 200 Freedom Schools in the wake of the Civil War. And from Baltimore, our universalists led the battle in Washington DC for women's suffrage. Our member Enoch Pratt gave the city its library system, open to all in spite of color and class and gender. And our member Mary Ellen Richmond turned social work from a voluntary charity system to a public and professional system that would lift us all up. Unitarian universalists believe in putting our values into action in the public square. 200 years ago, a message was preached in this pulpit that, believe it or not, became the most widely circulated pamphlet of the 1820s, in the period when pamphlet wars were a big thing. It's known as the Baltimore Sermon, and while it did indeed explicate the message of what we consider a simple Christian faith that we hoped would speak to many, a faith that was called by its detractors "unitarian", and which our forebears then chose to accept as a mark of honor, it concluded with a movement from the intention of the headiness of theology to the heart of the matter. Reverend Mr. William Elrie Channing, after about 90 minutes of sermonizing, said this: "You will remember," he told our new minister, "that good practice is the end of preaching, and will labor to make your people holy livers rather than skillful disputants. May your life preach more loudly than your lips." In this space, in the pursuit of beloved community, each Sunday, we light this chalice over there. I'll do it in just a second. And my request of you in this moment is that you take a deep breath and be with the center of your own faith, your own morality, your own spirituality. And allow me to just say these words, which we say to each other at the beginning of our service, and then give me just a second to walk to the altar and to carry light from the altar into the chalice, the chalice which we hope can contain all of the joys and sorrows of our lives, all of our aspirations for ourselves, for our closer communities, and for the city of Baltimore. We are about the work of transforming spirits, cultivating diversity, supporting one another, building a better Baltimore. Take a deep breath and allow me to light the chalice.
Lesson B.
Amen.
Thank you Reverend Olson. That was absolutely beautiful, the history lesson as well as the presentation. We really, really appreciate you. Thank you for joining your Baltimore City Council tonight.
My great pleasure to be here. Thank you for the invitation.
Yes. Now to council colleagues and to the folks who are watching at home, now we will turn to a pledge of allegiance. If you have a flag on your computer or behind you like I have, please turn to your flag and stick the pledge of allegiance. At this time, the clerk will call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Castello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the May 17, 2001 proceedings are on the council members' desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is adopted. Communications from the mayor can be found on page 2 of the agenda. We will now move to bills being introduced for first reading.
Council Bill 21-90, City Streets Closing at Edding Street and Four 10-Foot Alley's Bound by Jewett Hill Avenue, Gold Street, Division Street, and Baker Street. For the purpose of condemning and closing of Edding Street and Four 10-Foot Alley's Bound by Jewett Hill Avenue, Gold Street, Division Street, and Baker Street, as shown on plat number 337-A-28A and filed in the Office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Next up, we go to 21-91, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-91, Sell of Property Block 6997 Lot 002 for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interest in certain property located at NES, Growing Highway, 44-1 Feet Southeast of Colgate Creek Block 6997 Lot 002 and no longer needed for public use and for providing a special effective date. Sponsor President Mosby on behalf of the comptroller.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means. Next up, 21-92.
Mayor and City Council Resolution 21-92, Charter Amendment Homegrown Heroes Fund for the purpose of authorizing the establishment of a continuing, non-lapsing Homegrown Heroes Fund to be used exclusively to administer a public safety apprenticeship program for youth and young adults who are Baltimore city residents and between the ages of 11 through 21 years old, requiring that the annual ordinance of estimates include a specific appropriation for the Homegrown Heroes Fund and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsor is Burnett, Cohen, Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. At this point, the gentleman from the 8th District, would you like to have a floor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and I'll note my remarks for this, agreed for this bill and the companion bill, so I won't need it twice. So, you know, there's a famous quote that says, "Don't tell me what you believe. Show me your checkbook and I'll tell you what you believe." And since I've started on the council, we continuously talk about the need to create a cadet and to create cadet and apprenticeship programs for youth and young adults in Baltimore City. But when those hearings are over, very little action has been taken to really create a true pipeline that will connect our young people to those careers. This legislative package will finally move from conversations to action by requiring the Fire and Police Department to allocate 1.5% of their annual budget to fund the Public Safety Apprenticeship Program as seen in the companion bill 21-0094. So as we work to provide each of the 3,000-plus Baltimore City High School graduates with opportunities to attend college or pick a career, allocating funding to employ 100 young adults in public, the Public Safety Cadet Program will allow us to hire locally and build our public safety agencies with people who are representative of our communities. I really appreciate my colleague's support and I look forward to a thoughtful dialogue on this topic. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Are there any questions, concerns from members? You can see now we're going to move on. Madam Clerk, to 21-93. I'm so sorry. I think I already said this, but just for the record, that bill is assigned, 21-92, is assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Again, Madam Clerk, now on to 21-93.
City Council Bill 21-93, Revising Whistleblower Rights and Responsibilities for the purpose of updating Article 1, Subtitle 8, Whistleblower Rights and Responsibility of the City Code to define certain terms, requiring a whistleblower to report their complaint to their agency's personnel officer or to the city or to the office of the inspector general if the whistleblower has a reasonable and articulable belief that the personnel officer cannot competently investigate the covered disclosure. Requiring the office of the inspector general to give written notice of investigation or a notice of declination to the whistleblower within 30 days of receipt of the complaint, requiring the office of the inspector general, if initiating an investigation, to send a memorandum of protected activity to the whistleblower supervisor, requiring the office of the inspector general to provide recommendations for action and the office's written findings of an investigation and to give the written findings to the city administrator, the agency head, and the whistleblower. Requiring the city administrator to hold a meeting with the agency head and the inspector general to discuss the recommendations within a certain amount of time, providing possible remedies in case of the violation of this subtitle and conforming and clarifying related provisions. Sponsor Dorsey.
At this point, Councilman Dorsey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to note, I'm really thankful to the administration for working on this bill with me. This addresses a number of concerns that were learned of through the process of developing rules and regulations for the implementation of the Whistleblower Rights and Responsibilities Ordinance that the previous council passed in 2019, which I was the primary sponsor of. In the course of the very thorough and collaborative work that was done by the Department of Human Resources, the Labor Commissioner's Office, the City Law Department, and the Inspector General's Office, certain aspects of the law seemed, were learned to need a little tweaking. And so what this ordinance does is put forth revisions that effectively seek three outcomes. One, to make it easier for employees of the city to report alleged acts of retaliation. Two, to make it more practical for the inspector general or other supervisor to conduct an investigation pursuant to a report of alleged retaliation. And three, to instill more confidence that the outcome of an investigation will be duly considered by the supervisor within the agency of which the employee was retaliated against in cases where retaliation is found to have occurred. Notably, as was read in the long form of the bill title, that this, one of the things that, the primary means that this is, this part of the process is enhanced is by ensuring that a report is not just handed over to an agency head and the whistleblower at the end of the investigation, but goes a step further and also provides a copy of that report to the city administrator and requires that there be a meeting between the city administrator, the agency head, and the inspector general to discuss the outcomes of the investigation and the contents of the report. This is notably different from other reports that are done by the inspector general's office, which are made public and which are always, are inclusive of a written response before they, from the agency or often from the mayor's office before they are made public. That is not a part of whistleblower reports as they are a part of the personnel process and that action would not be published. So again, I'm very thankful to all of the agencies that worked very hard to discern ways in which the Whistleblower Rights and Responsibilities Law could be improved. And I thank the administration for working with me to bring forth this bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Are there any questions or concerns? Hearing and seeing none, this bill has been assigned to the...
I'm sorry, just real quick, Mr. President, I'd like to co-sponsor.
Got you. We have Councilman Cohen as a co-sponsor. We have Councilman Burnett as a co-sponsor. And we have Councilwoman Ramos as a co-sponsor. This bill has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. Madam Clerk, 21-94, please.
Council Bill 21-94, Public Safety Apprenticeship Program Establishment, the Hometown Heroes Act for the purpose of providing for the establishment and implementation of a public safety apprenticeship program for Baltimore City, providing for the development and oversight of the program by the Baltimore City Fire Department in partnership with certain other public safety agencies in Baltimore City, establishing the purposes of the program and requiring that the Baltimore City Fire Department report annually certain information to the mayor and city council and requiring the report to be made available on the department's website. Sponsors Burnett, Cohen, Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This was a bill that Councilman Burnett spoke of earlier. It's been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, please read in, 21-95.
City Council Bill 21-95, Labor Trafficking Notice Requirements for the purpose of requiring certain contractors with the city of Baltimore to place a notice regarding the Human Trafficking Prevention Hotline in certain locations, providing that certain contractors may obtain the required human trafficking notices from the United States Department of Homeland Security's Blue Campaign website, providing for certain penalties and generally relating to labor trafficking notice requirements for city contractors. Sponsors Burnett, Cohen, Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'd like to recognize the gentleman from the 8th District. Councilman Burnett, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. And so this bill is very similar to the other human trafficking signage bills that we've passed through this body, requiring, previously there were focused a little bit more on sex trafficking. The language in this is to essentially provide notice at construction sites and other areas in which labor trafficking could be potentially occurring as a way to provide access to resources for potential victims that may be trafficked or maybe being trafficked. And so it's pretty straightforward. I know that at least one of our colleagues has some ideas on how we can make it a little bit better, so I do look forward to that discussion in committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember. Next, this bill has been assigned to, again, Public Safety and Government Operations. Next up is 21-96.
City Council Bill 21-96, Building Code Permit Exemption for Shed, etc. Construction for the purpose of adopting a provision of the International Building Code exempting certain one-story detached accessory structures used as tool and storage sheds, playhouses, and similar uses from construction permitting requirements and conforming related provisions. Sponsor Schleifer.
At this point, Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So to all of the people out there in Baltimore City who have any storage sheds in their backyard for their lawnmower, for their bicycle, or any other gardening equipment, you probably did not realize you needed a permit that included site plans for that use of that shed. So before you go out to Home Depot and buy a shed, you would need site plans and a permit and follow the general building code. And so there's an international code that most cities, including Baltimore, follow that provides recommendations on what should be included in the city's code and what shouldn't be. And that international code, or national code, excuse me, says that any sheds below 120 square feet, so a 10 by 12 or smaller, would not need to follow that process. And so all I'm asking is that we adopt that national code and all those who have sheds that are 10 by 12 or below are no longer out of compliance with Baltimore City government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This bill, if not seen any questions, concerns, this bill has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. Next up is 21-97, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-97, Emergency Security Deposit Relief Act for the purpose of establishing the Emergency Security Deposit Voucher Program, placing a cap on the amount of money the Emergency Security Deposit Voucher Program can give each family for a security deposit, providing for certain funding for the Emergency Security Deposit Voucher Program, setting forth the eligibility requirements for the Security Deposit Voucher Program, requiring that the Department of Housing and Community Development adopt rules and regulations to administer the Emergency Security Deposit Voucher Program, establishing procedures on a family's admissions into the Emergency Security Deposit Voucher Program, putting certain priorities in place for distribution of security deposit vouchers, requiring the security deposit voucher to be used within a certain timeframe, making a family liable for the cost of the security deposit voucher upon a departmental finding that the family has used this security deposit voucher improperly, providing for an appeals case in case of a finding of improper use for this security deposit voucher or denial of a security deposit voucher, defining certain terms and providing for termination of this subtitle on a certain date. Sponsors Middleton.
At this point, I would like to recognize the Vice President of this council. Vice President Middleton, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And before I get into this bill, I just want to say, you know, during our luncheon, I briefly did an expression of myself on the previous bill and I'd just like to, again, just tap on that first because that will lead into the reasons why this is so important. The previous bill took an unexpected turn. I accept that. I, basically, it's, I'll say this. I first want to thank the council members that stood and worked with me till the very end up to today. It was a 12 to 2 vote at the very beginning and certain things happened that I don't want to go into because I'm focused on helping the people that are in need in our city through my personal experiences and through the experiences that I deal with and talk to my constituency in this city every single day. It's a shame that our grandmas can't get affordable housing or our single moms, or even young people that just start out on their own, trying to venture out and want to be by themselves and just start on their own. I was one of those people and security deposit was a barrier for me way back then. I also am a victim of being denied a loan for my first home because it's discriminatory. Discrimination I have been through all of my life. I don't profess to be an expert in renting, but I do know and feel what is happening with getting housing, affordable housing in this city. And I know that security deposits are a barrier. We have that insurance now. It's operating now. It was never a new product. I could go on with other things, but I'm going to stop there because I want to move on because it's an emergency now. And I know it's an emergency because during this pandemic, when people had to separate in our homeless facilities, most of our homeless facilities are downtown area in the, mostly in the 12th and 13th district. I accepted a group of facility to come in the center of my district residential area. I accepted that. I had meetings, surrounding meetings with the five neighborhoods. This was a temporary, another temporary solution to help people. I learned more about homeless than I have ever done in my life. Many of the men in that facility go to work every single day. They go to work, but they cannot afford an apartment. So that facility is their "apartment." We need to make changes and it needs to happen. This has been going on before the pandemic, before the pandemic. We have barriers and we have so many renters in this city. And again, I'm not giving up. I am not giving up. So today, I have this act, Renters, Another Security Deposit Act. We know that ARP money is coming to the city. We know that this bill is going to basically help. I see it as an immediate solution. It's a temporary act. It's $2 million funding that basically is going to HUD. There is a timeframe on this. These vouchers, it's a voucher program. It's coming starting July 1. These vouchers have to be used, I think, by sometime in October. Basically, it's establishing an emergency voucher program to provide direct assistance to renters for a security deposit. Vouchers will be provided to renters that must use, that they must use within 180 days up to $2,000. If a renter does not use a voucher within 180 days, they have the ability to file for an extension. The renter, if the renter is denied a voucher, they'll have an opportunity to appeal it in writing. The money does not need to be paid back. I'll say that again. The money does not need to be paid back. And to be eligible for this, it's based on 60% of the AMI, roughly, and that's roughly persons that make $65,000 and a household will be given priority to the, you know, lowest, based on the lowest incomes. This includes an adult provision for us to annually check the status of the disbursements and use. So I'm looking forward to the hearing. Again, this is time sensitive. I'm going to be also announcing the hearing tonight. I want us as a council to move forward together on this emergency act. I welcome all of you to please sign on to this so we can move on. And I hope that my conversations with the mayor will support this and will get this moving together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Council Vice President, for all of your leadership. We understand and know your passion behind this particular topic. I saw hand in hand how hard you worked for the past six months to provide security deposit relief for Baltimore City renters. I saw you fight through all of the rhetoric and misinformation that has been spewed out there about the hard work that you've done in your bill. I thank you for your leadership, not entertaining our idea of just going... for your leadership, not entertaining our idea of just going back and forth, but providing and developing the next logical legislative solution. I think this is the posture in which we're in right now. This is a temporary solution, but it does provide immediate relief. The reality is, we all understand and know that once the federal moratorium is lifted come July, that thousands upon thousands of Baltimore families will be at risk of needing immediate help in transitioning on to a new home. And that's exactly what you have put forth here, another alternative to, again, a bill that you've worked on for the past six months. So again, thank you for your leadership at this point. I believe I saw the hand of Councilman Dorsey. Is that a question, concern, or co-sponsor?
The latter, Mr. President.
If we could note that Councilman Dorsey's a co-sponsor. Are there any additional co-sponsors? I see Councilman Z. Cohen as a co-sponsor. Any additional co-sponsors since? I see Councilman James Torrance as a co-sponsor. Any additional co-sponsors? Felicia Porters? I'm sorry, say that again?
Bullock would like to co-sponsor.
Okay, we have Bullock as a co-sponsor as well. Any additional co-sponsors at this point? Council Chairman Stokes is a co-sponsor as well. Well, thank you so much again for your leadership, Madam Vice President. Truly, truly appreciate it. This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development. Next up, we're going to go into resolutions to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could read in 21-46R.
City Council Resolution 21-46R Investigative Hearing Use of Facial Recognition Technology in Baltimore. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore Police Department, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, the Department of Transportation, the Law Department, the Office of the Comptroller, the Department of Finance, the Baltimore City State's Attorney's Office, the Office of the Public Defender for Baltimore City, the Baltimore Development Corporation, and concerned parties from Baltimore's legal, academic, security, and nonprofit sectors to discuss the use of facial recognition technology in Baltimore and any local legislative options for the Baltimore City Council to consider in order to balance public safety, privacy, and individual civil liberties. Sponsors, Burnett, Conway, Cohen, Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, Councilman Burnett, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. So this is a effort to keep the conversation going on this very important issue. The use of this technology has become more and more pervasive, and there does need to be the development of a regulatory framework. And my hope is that through a series of conversations with experts in this field, city agencies in this field, we can do a much deeper dive into the impact that this could have on Baltimore City residents. That's all I have to say on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Councilman Burnett. This bill is assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. We're moving on to 21-47, Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution 21-47R Upkeep and Maintenance of Vacant Lots and Public Green Spaces. For the purpose of requesting the Director of the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Director of the Department of Planning, the Director of the Department of Transportation, the Director of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Head of the Bureau of Solid Waste, the Sustainability Coordinator, a representative from the Office of the Comptroller, and the Chief of the Bureau of Budget and Management Research to report on the annual cumulative total of calls for service of the upkeep and maintenance of vacant lots and green spaces, and recommending to the administration that a single city agency be charged with the responsibility for mowing all city-owned lots, parcels, parks, and green spaces. Sponsors, Burnett, Cohen, Dorsey.
Thank you. To the Executive Secretary, Natwana, we're going to assign this to Education, Workforce, and Youth. So we're going to assign this bill to Education, Workforce, and Youth. At this point, Councilman Burnett, would you like to yield the floor to you? Would you like to speak on behalf of this bill?
Yeah. So this, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. So this was a topic that was discussed extensively by several of our colleagues throughout the budget or related to agencies that are responsible for maintaining green spaces. And as we learn through the budget process and previous budget processes, that there is a hodgepodge of responsibility for those. I do want to thank Council Vice President Middleton for introducing this previously in the last term, and others have done this in previous terms, to try and really push for a unified, single agency to be responsible for maintenance so that there isn't confusion or finger pointing around who is responsible for what. As we know that this is something that all of our offices receive, a lot of calls about this time of year around high grass and weeds, maintenance of green spaces and vacant properties. And so I'm looking forward to continuing this conversation, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Councilman Burnett. Next up, Madam Clerk, we're going to 21-48R.
City Council Resolution 21-48R Request for Federal Action End the Embargo Against Cuba. For the purpose of urging Congress and the President to immediately end all aspects of the United States economic, commercial, and financial embargo against Cuba, including restrictions on travel to Cuba by United States citizens, urging the United States government to remove the Republic of Cuba from the United States list of state sponsors of terrorism, and urging the return of the Guantanamo Bay property to the Republic of Cuba. Sponsors, Middleton.
At this time of year, the floor to Madam Vice President, Sherman Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is basically a calling for an end for the United States embargo against Cuba. Baltimore City is a welcoming city. We could go all the way back into 1986 when Mayor, when Kurt Smoak was Mayor, and we signed on and was one of the first cities to basically divert from the apartheid of South Africa. And starting in 2019, there had been a list of municipal governments that have passed similar resolutions, and we want to be on the list right away to, we know that our previous president of the United States put this embargo back in place. And I've had several conversations with constituents and doing this on their behalf. As I said, we're a welcoming city. Baltimore had great relationships with Cuba. Johns Hopkins was a partner with them. We exchanged and had medical interests and expertise with Cuba. We also participated in cultural events and things, including baseball and sports-related things as well. So I'm asking for immediate adoption so we can get on the list with other cities such as Chicago, Detroit, St. Paul, Minnesota, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I could go on. There's a long list, and I just think that we should get on this list as well and continue to let our federal legislators know that this is important for our city. Along with all the other things that we're doing, this is also very important for our progress. So I would like everyone to accept this immediate adoption.
So, Madam VP, you going to move for it?
I'd like to move for suspend the rules to move for immediate adoption.
Without objection of suspending the rules, hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
I'd like to make a motion to move this bill for immediate adoption.
It's been moved. It's been moved and properly seconded for immediate adoption. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, please say nay.
Mr. President.
I know. The clerk, go ahead.
I have to abstain. I'd like to explain my vote. I think this is the first time I've abstained on a vote in six and a half years on the council. I simply do not have a thorough understanding of the geopolitical climate, the economic considerations, or the national security implications that this is getting into. And I simply do not feel comfortable voting on this. So I'm going to have to abstain.
Understood.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I believe we need a roll call for...
Yeah, I was going to that next. Councilman Dorsey. So Madam Clerk, if you could call a rule, please make sure you pause in between names to give council members the opportunity to say aye or nay.
President Mosley.
Aye.
Cohen.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Yes.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Abstain for the aforementioned reasons.
Stokes.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
The motion is approved. The resolution is adopted. Now on to City Council Resolution 21-49R. Madam Clerk, if you could read it in.
City Council Resolution 21-49R Investigational Hearing Existing Alternatives to Policing Strategies. For the purpose of inviting representatives from ROKA, Safe Streets, the Baltimore Police Department's Group Violence Prevention Strategy, and 911 Divergent Program, and the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement to inform the City Council about the existing alternatives policing strategies the city has in its arsenal. Sponsors, Conway.
At this point, I will yield the floor to Chairman Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is an opportunity to learn a little bit more about some of the programs that we have going on right now that take a more holistic approach to crime and safety here in our city, that being ROKA, Safe Streets, the Police Department's Group Violence Prevention Strategy, and 911 Divergent Programs. We're really seeking to identify the scope of these programs, the effectiveness of these programs, and really understand whether there are opportunities to expand those that are doing well and can better help us get a grapple on some of the safety issues that we have in our city. With that, I yield the floor to you, Mr. President. Thank you. Mr. President, you're muted.
Thank you for that. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations.
President, may I be a co-sponsor, please?
Yes, please note that Councilwoman Ramos would like to be a co-sponsor on 21-49R. I also see the hand of Councilman Burnett. I see the hand of Vice President Green Middleton in the addition. Hearing and seeing no addition, we'll move on now. Again, this bill has been assigned, 21-49R for the record, has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee.
Mr. President, I'm co-sponsored too.
No problem. No problem. We also make sure the record reflects that Councilman Cohen would like to also be a co-sponsor. Now on to the consent calendar. We can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Most you do approve.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the calendar is approved. We will now move for bills on second reader. At this point, I'd like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Mr. President, I move we read short titles on second and third reader for the duration of the hearing.
Without objection, we're moving on to short titles. We will move on to short titles. Hearing and seeing none. Now we are moving into second reader on short titles. First up is Economic and Community Development. Madam Clerk, if you could read the first bill in.
City Council Bill 21-31, Landlord Tenant Lease Renewal.
Madam Vice President, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you. The sponsor of this bill was Councilman Glover of the 13th District. The committee heard this bill on April 27, 2021, and a work session was held on May 18, 2021. The committee amended the bill. The amendments were, make the requirements of the bill temporary to coincide with the governor's emergency COVID actions. The bill will remain in effect through the 181-day after the emergency COVID action expires. Also clarified that a substantial breach of a lease does not include failure to pay rent or other charges, removes references to the Environmental Control Board, and nothing in the bill will preclude a tenant from pursuing other civil or criminal remedies or enforcement actions. I move the committee amendments.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of supporting and approving the committee amendments, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it.
I need to abstain, Mr. President.
Got it. We have one abstention. Anything else? Hearing and seeing none, the ayes have it, the committee amendments are now adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
So there are also floor amendments, floor amendments which correct technical errors. And I think we can move to, for that one.
So it's been moved, hasn't been properly seconded, for accepting the administration's technical errors, technical amendments, sorry.
So is there someone going from, going to explain from Legislative Reference, the technical amendment? Or we just go ahead and approve it?
Do you have the technical amendments, Madam Vice President?
If we could wait just a moment, I did just elevate Amy from DLR. She just put in the chat. She can explain the amendments.
Matt, who's going to join us?
Amy Rappel from Department of Legislative Reference.
Got it.
Hello? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
This is Amy from Department of Legislative Reference.
The floor is yours, Amy.
Okay, thank you. So our technical amendment, which we requested that Councilmember Middleton sponsor, if you look at, if you read the committee amendments closely, you'll see that there are some places where if you actually put it into the bill, certain things would overlap. Everything substantively goes together in the committee amendments, but just some, there are some places where things accidentally overlapped. And so our floor amendments make sure that all the substantive changes that the committee amendments did, those are done in our floor amendments. We just move things around a bit differently to make sure that everything actually fits into the bill properly. So that is why our floor amendments are striking the committee amendments in total, and then just moving things around. It's nothing substantive that we're changing by striking it total. It's just moving things around so that everything fits right. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you, Ms. Rappel. If you could hold on one second. Are there any questions or concerns for members from the floor at this time? So, Madam Vice President, I believe you put a motion on the floor to accept these technical amendments?
Yes.
Has that been seconded?
It has been seconded, Mr. President.
All right, so it's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of accepting the technical amendments from DLR, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. Again, please remember, there's one abstention on the gentleman from the 8th District. So the floor is back to you, Madam Vice President.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second.
The bill has been moved and properly seconded. It's amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it.
Yay.
No abstentions.
Mr. President, I would like to explain my vote.
That's fine. I'm sorry. So we still have one exception, the gentleman from the 8th, and I believe Chairwoman McCray would like to explain her vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. While I appreciate the intent of the bill after reviewing the bill, all hearings and amendments... all hearings and amendments in full, I have concerns around the enforcement and the legality of the bill, of the bill. My vote is going to be no, and I do thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairwoman. At this point, are there any other abstentions or votes in the negative?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I have the same vote and the same exact justification as Councilwoman McCray. And I do, I do want to thank the sponsor because I know he worked very hard on this and I understand and appreciate and support his intent, but I'm a no vote on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. At this point, are there any additional abstentions or votes against the bill? Hearing and seeing none, this bill is adopted and approved. We're gonna move on to now Health, Environment, and Technology. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the bill.
City Council Resolution twenty-one dash forty-four R. Informational Hearing, COVID-nineteen and Mental Health.
At this point, I recognize Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm also going to thank you and my colleagues and members of the public for their patience. I'm having issues with my camera. It will be back on shortly. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee held a hearing on the resolution on May the nineteenth. I move the resolution favorable.
Second.
So it's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This resolution is adopted on the Public Safety and Government Operations.
Thank you.
Yes. Go ahead, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. The agenda has Councilman Glover's bill listed as being moved to third reader for same-day adoption.
Yeah.
I don't believe that we moved it to, that we.
He's absolutely right.
You're very, you're very observant, Councilman Dorsey. We did not. We're gonna go back to it after we finish. Thank you. That's why you saw me talking off screen. But now we're moving on to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, if you could read in twenty-one dash one.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash one, Surveillance Technology in Baltimore.
At this point, I'd like to recognize the Chair of the Committee, Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this bill came out of committee on May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. It was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. The committee approved the bill as favorable with an amendment, and the amendments were sent to council members electronically. I move the committee amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of adopting the committee amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Opposed. Can I state my my reason?
For the amendments? This is not the bill, this is the amendments. Yeah, you you can state them for the amendments if you want to.
No, I mean, go ahead.
Yeah, wait. All right. So the ayes have it, the amendments are adopted. Now I'd like to recognize Councilman Burnett. Do you have floor amendments?
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. So colleague, you should have received this in the bill packet. So there's two floor amendments. One essentially does a carve-out for the port after conversations with the Maryland Port Administration. They came to me after we had all of the hearings, essentially raising concerns that the bill as written would impact their ability to comply with federal regulations around security. So one of them creates a carve-out for that. The second relocates many of the exemptions into reporting after having conversations with folks in the financial industry. Again, there were concerns about the impact on their ability to secure their space and again use this for security purposes. And it also clarifies the definition of surveillance. So it's pretty, pretty clear. Both are are pretty technical in nature and would like to make a motion to to move them for consideration.
Second.
So the committee chair, we, these are all friendly amendments, right, from the sponsor?
Yes.
So it's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The floor amendments are now adopted. Now back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I want to move the bill favorable as amended.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I believe that before we complete the vote, you would like to explain your vote. Chairman, you get to cipher. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. So this bill was pitched as a way to prevent people from being misidentified by the police despite not a single local example that had been given when we heard this last term in the Public Safety Committee. National examples that were given were based on old outdated technology, which frankly is really irrelevant because this bill does not actually apply to the police. Interesting enough, we've heard at the hearings that BPD honorably offered to sit down and work on policies and procedures to ensure that this issue that's happened in the past elsewhere doesn't happen here. And instead of taking that solution, we're moving forward with a bill that doesn't actually solve the problem. Clearly, this is a complex issue, which is why I applaud the bill sponsor for acknowledging that and putting forth a resolution today to call for a complete study and review of this issue. I believe voting on this today instead of only after the issue has been properly studied is a backwards approach and will only lead to unintended consequences. So if I can just give two alarming examples that I've heard from industry leaders in the past few weeks. Number one is banks. Banks use this technology to prevent bank fraud, which we know harm countless people every year, most often are seniors. And the second and even more alarming is from the hotel industry that states that they use this technology to stop and prevent human trafficking. They made it very clear that without this technology, they would not be able to continue those efforts. So in the meantime, this bill thankfully doesn't prevent law enforcement who uses this technology to solve the most violent crimes like shootings and homicides, including recent ones that they've solved using this technology, which alone is a reason why this bill is the exact opposite direction of what this body should be talking about. But this current bill, even though it's completely watered down, will prevent banks from stopping bank fraud and will prevent hotels from preventing and stopping human trafficking. And for those two reasons and many, many more, I vote no.
Mr. Chair, Chair Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank the sponsor for all of his hard work on this bill. I want to thank him for for the fantastic communication throughout the process and also want to thank him on behalf of the Maryland Port Administration, who I I was the member who brought this issue to his attention. He worked very diligently to address their concerns. And that's why I voted for the amendment, so I do appreciate that. I do think that this is a very complex issue. I want to applaud the sponsor for introducing a resolution to further discuss the issue, but at this time, I cannot support it, so I'm a no vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this point, anybody else would like to explain their vote? So far, we have two in the negative. So just to make sure that we're gonna clear this up. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call just so we're all on the same page?
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
No.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Yes.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
No.
Stokes.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
The ayes have it. This bill is adopted. This bill is adopted and should be printed for the third reader. Next up is City Council Bill twenty-one dash thirty-three, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash thirty-three, Amari's LGBTQ Procurement Preference Act.
At this point, I'd like to recognize the Chair of the Committee, Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. It was sponsored by Councilmember Odette Ramos. The committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments, although I'm going to recommend, I'm gonna move that we refer the bill back to committee. There was some information that had not been considered in committee because we we did not get a fiscal note from Finance. We also were unable to hear the reports on the bill after getting amendments in from a couple of agencies. And so I would like to have this come back to committee.
Thank you, Chairman Conway. It's been a formal motion on floor. Is there a second?
Second by Councilman Stokes.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of recommitting this bill back.
Mr. President?
To committee? Yes.
May we open the floor for debate before a vote is taken?
Sure. Or you can explain your vote when we vote. How about that? We'll go to roll call and you just explain your vote.
I would prefer to be able to speak on this before a vote is cast.
That's fine. I yield the floor to you, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not a member of the committee in which this bill was heard, but I have reviewed documentation. I've reviewed the legal opinion on this, particularly pertaining to some of the comments that were made by MBO. I know that one of the things that MBO brought up was their interest in the Small Business Enterprise Program, which is unconstitutional, which is why it doesn't exist. This is well documented. And I don't think their interest in that program should play a role in deterring us from creating other programs that advance equity for LGBTQ people or any other sector of our population. And I have not heard any other specific compelling reason why this bill should be recommitted to committee. I I asked if the Chair who would make the motion would send me any such information. I haven't heard any, I have not been sent anything. I haven't heard anything specifically articulated here along with that motion. And so I'm certainly going to be voting against this motion, and I implore other members of the council to also vote against this motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. Just for the record, I believe the conversation in which you're talking about just took place less than an hour ago at our council luncheon. So just for the record, the folks out there watching and listening, I don't think that the Chair had much time in answering the requests. I believe I saw your hand, Chair, and Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And and thank you for your concern about pushing it back to the committee, Councilman Dorsey. I I think the the overall intention here is that we want to respect the legislative process. And if there is important considerations brought forward by our by city agencies, we certainly want to make sure we consider that in drafting legislation. You know, of course, we want to make sure we do our due diligence. And I believe if if you, you you have received an email from Councilwoman Ramos, I I would say that that addresses many of the concerns that were brought forward in conversations with the city agencies. If there is additional conversation, I'll offer that to any of the council members here if you if you'd like to know more. But overall, the the intention here is to make sure that we can have the conversation about this this bill in public. I felt uncomfortable having those conversations behind closed doors. And I thought it would be best for the process, best for our, for the bill, for this conversation to be had in public. So with that, I hope that members will support and send this back to committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point, are there any additional comments or concerns, any unreadiness? Yes, again, to the council members, you will have time to explain yourself. We're gonna do a roll call, but if you would like to do so now, it is definitely your right. So the floor is yours, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I I do want to thank the Chair for his interest in being transparent and diligent. I just would urge the council to resist sending it back to committee because I think all the questions that have been brought to us were answered and also acknowledging that we didn't hear about these problems, any concerns. They're not problems anymore because we've answered them until after the work session after we voted on it. So that does speak to the issue of having, you know, and and also we, our staff, myself and staff, did everything we possibly could to try to reach out to the agencies so prior to the work session. So I think we did our due diligence, and I would appreciate the council's support. Thank you very much.
No, thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Any additional questions, concerns, or unreadiness at this point? Hearing and seeing none. Madam Clerk, if we could go on a roll call?
Sure. President Mosby.
Aye. I'm sorry, just to move forward. This roll call is based off of the motion. The motion was provided and properly seconded. It was given by the Chair of the Committee, Chairman Conway, to recommit this bill back into committee based off of the aforementioned discussion. So at this point, we're going into roll call to recommit the the bill back. Vote in favor of this is to recommit the bill back into committee. My vote is aye.
Cohen.
No.
McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey.
Mr. President, to just further explain my vote, I would just like to comment that this bill was introduced on February eighth of this year, and today is June eighth. That that is the very definition of ample time for any city agency to have raised any concerns. And despite the fact that the concerns were raised so late in the process, the documentation is clear that the concerns that raised are either off-base as they propose that we do something that is unconstitutional or delve into a matter that is clearly addressed. There are no unresolved concerns, so far as I can tell, related to this bill. And so I vote no on recommitment. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Councilman Dorsey. Madam Clerk, if you could continue with the roll call.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
I'm going to abstain on this one.
Burnett.
Mr. President, I'd like to explain my vote.
Yes.
And and I would, just to keep it short, would would second the comments by my colleague, Councilmember Dorsey, as a member of the committee. I thought we did a pretty thorough dive into the issue and after reviewing both, all of the bill reports for this bill, as well as I went back and looked at the establishment of the MBO office initially, ten years ago, and and feel pretty confident that the process of requiring a disparity study is the best way to go and and believe that we should continue to move this legislation forward. So with that, I would vote no.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Bullock.
Nay.
Porter.
Nay.
Costello.
Yes.
Stokes.
Explain my vote. My vote is I've been getting emails from minority contractors about this bill. I also be getting emails from LGBTQ men who have a problem with this bill, so I vote yes.
Glover.
Well, you know, while I do support this bill, you know, I want to make sure that the issues that was raised by the Law Department are already addressed, like like Councilman Stokes recently. I've just gotten a whole bunch of emails in reference to this bill. I've just gotten a whole bunch of emails in reference to this bill as well. I have a daughter who's 15 that I'm one of her biggest supporters, and she represents the LGBT community as well. So, you know, I'm just going to go ahead and allow this to go back to committee so we can, you know, try it again. So right now, I want to say yes.
Ramos.
No, and I'd like to explain my vote. I think we have done due diligence. I want to make sure that everybody understands the the amendments and that, you know, that we are doing a study first to be able, this bill would allow for a study first to make sure that there is discrimination in LGBT business. It does not take away from MBE or WBE. And it is my commitment to MBO to work hard, to advocate for them, to make sure that they have the capacity that they need to be able to make sure that the MBE and WBE programs work well, and also this one. So I vote no. I believe we should move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I think my count is eight in the affirmative, six nay, one abstention. This recommitment back to committee.
If I can explain my vote, I will say that.
Explain, you can't explain an abstention.
Okay.
You can't. Go ahead. Explain your extension.
I'm going to extend my extension. After having conversations with the Finance Department about the cost of disparity, I was torn on it because financially it's one thing I had to think about in terms of what the cost is to the city. So that's what I changed.
So that's why you abstained?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I think we have a vote of eight to six with one abstention. Mr. Chair, I believe I saw your hand raised.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to, I look forward to working to address the concerns brought forward by the agencies. You know, I think we're all looking to do the right thing here. And I think we just want to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's on the bill. And so I look forward to working with Councilwoman Ramos to address the concerns publicly. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This bill will be recommitted back to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. Madam Clerk, on to Rules and Oversight, City Council Bill 21-19.
City Council Bill 21-19, Baltimore City Office of LGBTQ Affairs.
Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're going to keep this one simple. And we heard, the Committee heard this on May 20th, and we have a favorable recommendation. So I'd like to move this bill favorable.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of adopting this committee amendment? I'm sorry, no, of adopting this, no amendments? Or were there committee amendments?
No.
There is an amendment. It's a technical amendment.
Do you have a technical amendment, Chair?
I don't have it in front of me. Bill sponsor, would you like to tell us what the technical amendment was?
Yeah, so a technical, it fixes, so on page one, line six, it corrects a typo. Proving and substituting providing is the technical amendment for this one. And that was offered by legislative reference.
Councilman Burnett, can you formally ask for approval on this?
I'd like to move the technical amendment, Mr. President.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving this technical amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The technical amendment is approved. At this point, I'll call on the Chair again, Chair Schleifer.
Thank you very much, Councilman Burnett. Yeah, I would like to move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been a motion, and it's also been properly seconded to move the bill favorable as amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill is moved as amended on favorably. It'll be printed for third reading. Next up is Ways and Means, City Council Bill 21-72.
City Council Bill 21-72, Local 911 Telephone Fee Revision.
At this point, I would like to call on the Committee Chair, Councilman, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on this bill. Had five agency reports, had a discussion, went into recess. We voted this bill out of committee last evening. I move the bill favorably.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Please note that I will be a nay on this particular bill, concerned with the ability of us raising fees or taxes in the midst of a global pandemic, particularly when we're dealing with the crisis of violence we have in our city regarding local 911 fee structure. So again, I believe we have, this bill is, will be approved and now ready for third reading. I believe that we're going to try to invoke City Council Rule 12-1 to double read it tonight. I'll call on the Committee Chair, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke City Council Rule 12-1 to move bill from second to third reader on the same day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Hearing and seeing no unreadiness, we will invoke Council Rule 12-1 to advance it from second to third reader. Is there a second to Councilman Costello's motion?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of moving it on, moving it to third reader, please say aye.
Roll call. Aye.
Roll call has been requested. Madam Clerk, if you could please go through the roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Aye.
Dorsey.
Aye.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
The ayes have it. This bill is approved. We'll move on to City Council 21-80. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, but before we move on, I just wanted to note for the members that 21-72 is on the published agenda for the 5:00 PM meeting, as part of the conclusion of the budget work.
Madam Clerk, 21-80.
City Council Bill 21-80, Orders of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2022.
At this point, I will call Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I be acknowledged to speak on all three budget bills at once before making the motion on this bill?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, Mr. President, I want to thank you for your leadership on this. It is because of your leadership that we're in a position to get the vote that we're going to get today on this. And also has resulted in the fact that we were able to work with each of our colleagues to work on their priorities within their districts, make progress on those priorities. So that is, that is because of your leadership. I want to specifically thank Lawrence Anderson and Matt Stegman from your office, who spent a great deal of time with me all throughout the week, 14-hour days, plus late-night phone calls, early-morning phone calls, the weekend, et cetera. We wouldn't be in the position we're in right now without Lawrence and Matt's great work. I'd also like to thank Mayor Scott and his administration for really working with us throughout this process, specifically Chief of Staff Huber, City Administrator Chris Shorter, Deputy City Administrator Daniel Ramos, Finance Director Henry Raymond, Budget Director Bob Seneme, Natasha Mehu, and Nina Themus from the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. I'd also like to thank all of our colleagues, especially the Committee members, Council Vice President Middleton, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Stokes, and Councilman Schleifer for helping out with vice chairing throughout the week and coming in for various shifts. I really appreciate how engaged the Council was, especially the Committee members, throughout this process. And last, and certainly not least, and in fact, most important of all, I want to give a huge public thank you to Marguerite Curran, staff to the Committee. There is no way any of us would be standing without Marguerite's great work throughout the week in helping us get through this thing and getting through it the right way and on time. So with that, Mr. President, I move the bill favorably.
I hear motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
So it's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of moving this bill, please say aye.
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 All those, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill moves on to third reader. Were we going to try to move this, invoke the Council rules tonight? We are, right?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to invoke City Council Rule 12-1 to move a bill from second to third reader during the same meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Don't move.
So we don't have to vote on that. We don't have to vote on the the rule, just if there's any unreadiness or any concerns. Hearing none. Is there a motion to move this bill?
Well, Mr. President, point of order, I believe we just voted on the bill on second reader.
On second reader, yeah.
And then the motion put it to the third reader portion of the agenda.
Correct. I got you. Got you. Yeah, so we're good there. I'm sorry about that. So you're exactly right. We voted on second, and we moved it to third, so then it'll come up on third portion of the reading. So on to 21-81, Mr. Chair.
Mr. President, if I could please move back to the second one, I guess I'll defer to Matt Stegman here, but I believe you need to approve the motion to move it from second to third reader on the same day, Mr. President.
I thought that we did, and we do have to do that. So let's just start it over again. So you asked to invoke Council Rule 12-1, right? We took no unreadiness there, right? I don't believe that there needs to be a motion. I believe that it automatically goes. Matt, correct me if I'm wrong. For the purpose of time, we'll just do it. So it's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay. This is now on to third reader. At this point, I would like to recognize Chair Costello for 21-81.
Um, I don't know if the clerk was going to read it.
If you could read in 21-81. Madam Clerk?
City Council, City Council Bill 21-81, Annual Property Tax Fiscal Year 2022.
Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I move this bill, I'm going to note that we are not going to invoke. We are going to invoke Rule 12-1 to move it on the same day. However, we are not going to vote on it on third reader at this meeting because we still need to go to the Board of Estimates at 4:00 PM for certification by the Honorable Board. And then we will come back at 5:00 PM to vote on it. So, Mr. President, I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading, and as discussed, we'll take this up at a 5:00 PM meeting. Next up, Madam Clerk, if you could read in 21-82.
Mr. President, point of order, I still have to go back and invoke Rule 12-1.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved, I moved to invoke Rule 12-1 in City Council Rules to move a bill from second to third reader on the same day with the caveat that on the same day means at 5:00 PM today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Hearing and seeing no objections, this will be moved from second to third reader on the same day. And 12-1 rule will be taken out. It has. Madam Clerk, we can go on to 21-82. Please read it into the record.
Mayor and City Council Resolution 21-82, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2022.
At this point, I would like to yield the floor to Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
Bill been moved favorably. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Bill been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill will be printed for third reading. Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke City Council Rule 12-1 to move the bill from second to third reader in the same meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Hearing no objections, invoke Council Rule 12-1. This will be moved from second to third reader on the same day, or vote. Seeing none, we're going to move it to a third reader and hear it on the same day. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Haven't been properly moved to second. We're just gonna, I'm sorry, I, the script keeps having the third reader pop up. My bad. Sorry, guys. So we're gonna, we're gonna hear it on third reader again. We turn now to third reading for final passage that requires invocation of City Council Rule 12-1 on the same day of advancement. The clerk will read the bill and call the roll. The first bill up is 21-31, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry, nope. We did not put that on second reader, so we're gonna have to delay that. The first bill up is 21-80.
21-80, Orders of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2022. President Mosby.
And you can just keep reading, Madam Clerk.
Cohen. McCray. Dorsey.
Mr. President, Mr. President, point of order.
Yes.
I'm terribly sorry to do this, but I think my understanding of Rule 12-1 is it requires roll call. And I fear that we're going to need to go back and do roll call on, on 21-0081 and 21-0082. I, of course, defer to your staff if I have them incorrectly, but I strongly suspect I'm correct.
Well, just to err in the side of caution, normally on third reader, you can just read through. But since we invoked Rule 12-1, and without getting into the technicalities of it, we'll just do it just to be safe. Is that okay?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that, sir.
No problem. So Madam Clerk, if you could begin, again, on the roll call?
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey.
Yeah.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Yes.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Mr. President, I'm very sorry, sir.
Hey, you, what's going on, Costello? No, what's wrong?
The City Council Rules, Rules 12-1, advancement on same, on same day. 12-1B, second reading to third reading, a bill may not be advanced from second reading to third reading on the same day except on a separate affirmative vote taken by a roll call of three-quarters of all members. Mr. President, we have done a roll call to move 21-0080 to a third reader on the same day. We have not, we have not done that roll call on the other two bills. I would ask that the clerk take us back to second reader, starting with 21-0081, so that we can invoke Rule 12-1B again.
We're not going to do that. We're going to continue with this roll call, and then we'll go back. I was under the impression that we did do it for the third bill, but we'll go back and just make sure we clean it up. But we're not going to interrupt this vote.
Thank you, sir.
So Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, if you could continue where you were.
Costello.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
So this bill is approved. For the record, that's 21-80. This was this body's first budget. I think that, as was stated earlier, there was a tremendous amount of work that was done. First and foremost, thank you to our Chair, Councilman Costello, facilitating such a professional, such a sound hearing. I think the agency's got a lot of good questions. I think much, much, much of the work that have come out of the budget process will continue to go on, be it legislative oversight hearings or other debate and discussion back and forth with the administration. be it legislative oversight hearings or other debate and discussion back and forth with the administration. You know, it is our job as legislators to develop a more perfect Baltimore through policy and legislation. I think the budget process provides a tremendous opportunity to do so. I saw a lot of advocating for specific issues, as well as for specific things in your own individual districts. I am proud of the work of this body and the amount of time that was spent and put into the budget process, and I would like to thank each and every one of you, as well as the citizens of Baltimore, the agency heads and personnel of the city who participated in such a long and arduous but critically important process. So at this point, Madam Clerk, again, just to err on the side of caution. I'm sorry, Madam Vice President.
I just quickly would just like to also thank the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, Councilman Eric Costello. For the new members on this council, Councilman Costello has been leading the charge with the budget since he's, basically since he's been a council member. With his expertise with numbers, multitasking, he set up these meetings back in April. I mean, it really takes a lot of behind the scenes development to put forth and long hours and then continue to give your constituent service and work as a council person and all your other responsibilities and duties. So I think that we as a council should give Councilman Costello a round of applause for, and just really thank him because it does, it takes a lot of time out of your schedule. You have to meet with the mayor and his team. You have to stay and meet with the president and his team. You have to talk with all of us and work our needs and give, you know, the things that we, the messages that we would like to give back as we work through this budget. It takes experience. This is a true example of the need of experience as we move forward. So thank you, Councilman Chairman Costello, for your work and your dedication to this city and to this long budget process.
Well, thank you, Madam Vice President, for that.
Can I? Mr. President, can I add a second thing to that? I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, but also as one of the new members, I felt that it was a process where we all felt like our questions were important and that our requests were honored, and I just really appreciated the fact that, you know, we all were included in a way that was genuine, that was, that, you know, Chairman felt like, and made us feel like everybody was important in this process. And I think that that's, that's really just a really hard thing to do, and it was really amazing. So thank you very much.
No, thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Anyone else would like to comment on 21-80? Yes, Chairman Stokes.
I just want to thank my colleagues, but especially Councilman Costello, because he did a yeoman's job. Just a tough job to do, but he did it like he'd been doing it forever, but I just wanted to let him know that I really appreciate his experience and moving these bills forward and having this hearing run pretty smooth. So thank you.
Councilman, Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I don't want to give him all the kudos that I'm thinking in my head because I'm trying to keep him humble. But, you know, Councilman, Chairman Costello did an excellent job. I know just yesterday I was in the council chambers all day with him, and that was just one of the days, and put in some other shifts throughout the week, and I can tell you, it's exhausting, especially in that heat and those chairs all day, and so, great work, Chairman Costello.
Councilman Glover.
I gotta say, I know I was hard, bro, and he, you know, he would, he would go back and forth, and he made me feel really comfortable as being, you know, a rookie on the, on the team now, on the council now, but he, he made sure that all my questions were answered. It wasn't like he was pushing anything to the side. If he asked me to send something out, I'd send it right away. He made sure I sent it midnight, 1 o'clock in the morning. I mean, he was up. I don't even know how he's up right now because he was up. And I want to say I greatly appreciate you, brother, and continue to do the great work that you're doing. The city of Baltimore is really, really blessed to have a guy like you. Thank you.
Anyone else? So I think when we collectively take all of those comments together, you know, I think this budget process exemplifies the level of professionalism that we want to continue to push through this council. And I think that we've been able to see that through committee work, but more importantly, through this budget process. Budget process in cities like Baltimore is not an easy process as it relates to negotiation and going back and forth. And, you know, I couldn't have said it better than all of you about the work that Councilman Cost, Chairman Costello did, as well as the work from Matt Stegman, Lawrence Anderson, and all the folks that before Councilman, before Chairman Costello began to talk about the bill, the names that he read off from the administration. So again, my hat goes off to Chairman Costello.
Ms. Curran, too. Marguerite Curran was champ.
Correct. Marguerite Curran and all the other names that he read off earlier. So with that, we're going to go back just to err on the side of caution. We have gone and invoked Rule 12-1 to read on the same day, but we want to ensure that we did a roll call vote on that to ensure that there was no technical holdup. So we're going to just, again, err on the side of caution. Madam Clerk, if you could go back and read in 21-81, and then what we're going to do, just to get it nice and clean on the record, Councilman Costello, you're going to then invoke 12-1 again, and then we're going to do a roll call about voting for it on the same day, just to keep it nice and clean. Does that work for everyone? All right. So Madam Clerk, if you could go back and read in City Council Bill 21-081.
City Council Bill 21-81, Annual Property Tax Fiscal Year 2022.
Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke City Council Rule 12-1B to move a bill from second to third reader on the same day, but note that it will not be moved to third reader for this meeting, rather at 5:00 PM today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Hearing and seeing no objections, I think we're going to do a roll call because there might be a catch-all that says we need to do a roll call to vote on the same day. So, Madam Clerk, if you could read the roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey.
Yeah.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Yes.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Yes.
Yes.
Stokes. Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
So it's been, it's been moved from second to third reader, and we've approved that it could be voted on on the same day. We're going to do that now, Madam Clerk, for 21-82.
Mayor and City Council Resolution 21-82, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2022.
Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke City Council Rule 12-1B to move a bill from second to third reader on the same day, specifically at this meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
No problem, Mr. Chair. Hearing and seeing no objections, we will invoke Rule 12-1 to allow us to go to third reader at this point. Again, just to ensure that all technicalities are taken care of, we're going to do a roll call to allow us to vote on the same day. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Yes.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now back on third reader, we're going to jump to 21-82 again. Now remember, 21-81 has the technicality of going through the Board of Estimates before coming back to us at our 5:00 PM meeting. So we're going to jump to 21-82 in third reader. Madam Clerk, if you could call it in and then do the roll call.
21-82, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2022. President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey.
Aye.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Yes.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
This bill is approved. Now, Madam Clerk, 21-25. Now, between now, the remaining bills are not bills that we invoke Rule 12-1. So Madam Clerk, you're just going to read in the bill and then run through the roll. Please pause between names.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Before you go to that, should we do the 21-31?
No, because it was at the, no, we, because we never, we never invoke the the, we skip past that. Do you want to go back to that, Madam Vice President? It's your committee. We can do it quickly. Okay, let's go back. So, Madam Clerk, if you could read in 21-31, Landlord Tenant Lease Renewals, we're going to invoke City Council Rule 12-1 here.
21-31, Landlord Tenant Lease Renewals.
At this point, Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
I'd like to invoke Rule 12-1 for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Hearing and seeing no objections, we will invoke 12-1. Based off of airing in an abundance of caution, we will do a roll call to ensure that we can proceed. Madam Clerk.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
No.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Which bill is this?
21-31, Landlord Tenant Lease Renewals.
Who's the last name you called, Madam Clerk?
Conway.
That was Councilman Glover's bill. Count, I don't know. Chair Schleifer.
Okay, I'm just trying to find which one we're talking about. I got you.
Madam Clerk.
Schleifer.
Now.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Abstain.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Abstain.
Costello.
No.
Stokes.
Could you explain the bill again? Can you explain it, please?
This is, this is for Chairman Stokes, this is 21-31, Landlord Tenant Lease Renewal. This was Councilman Glover's bill that provides 180-day protection to ensure that there's only just cause associated with evictions as the federal moratorium runs out.
So you extended it to 180 days?
Correct. Correct. I believe it's 181 days, maybe.
Hmm.
Mr. President?
Can you come back to me, Councilwoman Porter has?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I was on an incorrect bill. I would like to change my vote, please, sir, to aye.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, sir.
Back to you, back to you, Chairman Stokes.
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
So the, that means that we moved, we invoked 12-1, moved it to third reader, took a roll call that we could vote on the same day. So now we're going to have to vote on, all right? We're all on the same page? Madam Clerk, if you could read in 12-1 for final approval. I mean, sorry, read in 21-31 for final approval.
21-31, Landlord Tenant Lease Renewals. President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
No.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
No.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Abstain.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
This is the vote to suspend the rules, right?
No, this is the vote to approve the bill. We already suspended the rules.
No.
Stokes.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
This bill is approved. Congratulations, Councilman Glover, for your first bill. This is a pretty big bill. I'm proud of all the work that you put in to get us here. Now, Madam Clerk, we're going to read in the next bills. It's about seven bills. We do not have to do roll call. You just have to read the names and pause in between names. So we're going to start with 21-25, Madam Clerk.
21-25, Not Once Bills on Third Reading for Final Passage.
Start on 21-28, I'm sorry.
Okay, 21-28, Landmark List Clifton School. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Now, 21-23, Madam Clerk.
21-23, Urban Renewal Middle East Amendment. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Now, on to 21-45, Madam Clerk.
21-45, Rezoning, Block 4053, Lot 13, Ward 9, Section 20. President Mosby.
You just keep reading, Madam Clerk.
Oh, sorry. Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Now, on to 21-59, Madam Clerk.
21-59, Study and Report Secession Planning. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On to 21-59. This bill, that bill has been approved, 21-45. Now on to 21-59. Now, on to twenty-one dash fifty-nine.
You mean twenty-one dash sixty?
Uh, did we just do fifty-nine? Make sure we read in fifty-nine? Okay, well, the last one, yes, twenty-one dash sixty.
Twenty-one dash sixty.
So, Madam Clerk, again, just for the record, twenty-one dash fifty-nine has been formally approved. Now, we're gonna move on to twenty-one dash sixty, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash sixty, study and report fire department promotional practices. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, uh, for working us through all of that. Uh, this bill has been approved. Next, we're gonna move on to withdrawing bills. Bills to be withdrawn can be found on page eleven on your agenda. Next up, committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, uh, please proceed with any announcements. First up, we're gonna go to E C D.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, be patient, there's ten announcements.
Uh-oh.
Uh-huh. The Economic and Community Development Committee will hold the, the following virtual WebEx hearings. Um, I move to suspend the rule to announce a hearing for bill number twenty-one dash zero zero nine seven. That's, um, go ahead.
Without objection, for rule suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Back to you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Um, twenty-one dash zero zero nine seven will be heard on, uh, June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, at two P M. That's, that's, uh, the Emergency Security Deposit Relief Act, um, sponsor Middleton. I move to suspend the rules to announce a hearing for bill number twenty-one dash zero zero eight five.
Without objections, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Back to you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Uh, this bill will be heard on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, at two P M. And that's the Baltimore City Fire Code Telephone Access nine-one-one Emergency System, uh, by the Administration and Fire Department. Uh, the next bill, uh, twenty-one dash zero zero seven eight, required real estate disclosures, formerly vacant structures, uh, will be heard on June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, at two P M. And, uh, sponsor is Ramos. On, uh, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, at two oh five P M., we'll hear City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero three six R, informational hearing, avoiding an eviction crisis. Sponsor the bill, Councilwoman Ramos.
Excuse me, this is Amy Rapal from D L R. Are these, um, hearings, are we using Rules ten-two and ten-three to announce early hearings still, or were the first two just early hearings, and these are regular hearings?
The first two were just suspending the rules.
And that was eight-five, the, the second of the two was twenty-one dash zero zero eight-five?
The two where we suspend the rules are twenty-one dash, uh, ninety-seven and twenty-one dash eighty-five.
Okay, thank you. I apologize. I have to get this journal ready for, in an hour. So, thank you.
That's okay. Um, the next bill will be heard on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, two oh five, twenty-one dash zero zero three six R, informational hearing, avoiding an eviction crisis. That was Ramos. Then, on July twentieth, twenty twenty-one, two P M., City Council Bill twenty-one zero zero twelve, rezoning twelve fourteen dash twelve twenty, Hall Street. Um, sponsor, Costello. Also, on July twentieth, twenty twenty-one, at two oh five, we'll hear City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero five five. That's the zoning conditional use, retail goods establishment with alcohol beverages sales, twenty-six hundred North Howard Street, sponsor Stokes. Also, on July twentieth, twenty twenty-one, at two-ten P M., City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero six three, rezoning twelve oh one Dundalk Avenue, sponsor Cohen. Also, on July twenty, twenty twenty-one, two fifteen P M., City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero six five, rezoning eleven oh three to eleven oh nine North Washington Street. Um, sponsor Glover. Also, on July twentieth, twenty twenty-one, at two-twenty P M., we'll hear City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero four two R. That's the approval for the exchange of a Class B, the seven license for use at thirty-five oh one Boston Street, also known as thirty-eight thirty-one Boston Street, to a Class A seven license use at thirty-nine oh one Boston Street, also known as thirty-nine seventy-five Boston Street, sponsor Cohen. And also, on July twentieth, uh, twenty twenty-one, at two-twenty-five P M., we'll hear City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero, uh, six four, zoning conditional use retail, sponsor Cohen, which is the retail for establishment, uh, goods establishment with alcohol beverage sales, a portion of thirty-nine oh one Boston Street, also known as thirty-nine seventy-five Boston Street. And that's it, uh, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Up next is E W Y, Education, Workforce, and Youth. Uh, Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
No enough.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes. Next up is H E T, Health, Environment, and Technology. Chairman, Chairwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, June the sixteenth, um, twenty twenty-one, at ten oh one A M. on Bill two-one dash zero zero seven five, Study and Report Sewage Backup Expedited Reimbursement and Direct Assistance Program. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will also hold a hearing on Wednesday, June the sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, at ten oh two A M. on Resolution two-one dash zero zero three nine R, Violence Against Women and Overlooked Public Health Crisis. The hearings will be conducted virtually through WebEx. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, uh, Chairwoman McCray. Next up, we're going to Public Safety and Government Operations, S G O. Uh, Mr. Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I've got five announcements. So, the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be hearing Bill number twenty-one dash zero zero eight six, Minority and Women's Business Program Interim Extension, on Wednesday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, at one P M. virtually. Uh, this is, uh, sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. Um, the P S G O meeting will also be meeting, um, to hear Bill twenty-one dash zero zero six one, Minority and Women's Business Enterprises Self-Performance Credit, on Wednesday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, at one oh one P M. virtually. Uh, this is also sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. Uh, the committee will be meeting to hear Bill, uh, twenty-one dash zero zero seven zero, um, Required Market Research, on Wednesday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, at one oh two P M. virtually. And this is also sponsored by Councilman Burnett. Um, Councilman Burnett writes a lot of bills. Um, the P S G O committee will be meeting to hear Bill twenty-one dash zero zero six nine, um, Transparency and Procurement, on Wednesday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, at one oh three P M. virtually. And this one is sponsored by Councilmember Antonio Glover. Uh, thank you, Mr. Oh, wait, one more. Um, P S G O will be meeting to hear Bill twenty-one dash zero zero six eight, uh, Carrying Mistakes in Bids, on Wednesday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, at one oh four P M. virtually. And this is also sponsored by Councilmember Antonio Glover. Uh, I believe that's all I have. Yes, it is. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Conway. Next up, we have Rules and Legislative Oversight. Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a bill, uh, hearing on Bill number EA twenty-one dash zero zero three one, this Thursday, June, uh, tenth, twenty twenty-one, at two P M. On the confirmation hearing of Jason W. Mitchell, uh, for the Director of Public Works. And I would like to move to suspend Rules ten-two and ten-three to announce a hearing.
Without objection or concerns, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, um, Rules ten dash two and ten dash three are suspended. Uh, Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Yes, so the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on Bill number C C twenty-one dash zero zero nine six, this Thursday, June tenth, twenty twenty-one, uh, after the previous hearing at two oh one P M. Uh, for the ordinance of building code permit exemption for shed, um, et cetera, construction. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next, up, and last but certainly not least, Ways and Means. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
No announcements. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we move to regular announcements. Members, please wait to be recognized. Make any regular announcements at this time. Please raise your hand. Hearing and seeing no regular announcements, uh, I would like to recognize Vice President, uh, Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the City Council will be, will be held on Tuesday, June eighth, twenty twenty-one, at five P M. in a little less than an hour.
I'm so sorry, um, Madam Vice President. We're gonna, uh, push that out a little bit. You know, I still have to do the Board of Estimates next. So let's say five fifteen, because we're gonna start Board of Estimates at four-thirty. So let's say five fifteen.
Five fifteen, but we also would like to have a moment of silence for now for the families of the one hundred and thirty-nine victims of homicide. Also, um, for the COVID deaths since the, uh, beginning or start of COVID, which has now jumped to one thousand and eighty-two. And then, of course, also a moment of silence for our, um, victims suffering from our opioid epidemic.
Thank you. There being no further business at the desk, this concludes the twelfth meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council. We'll see everyone back here at five fifteen today, uh, to complete the work on the budget. Thank you. Love you, Baltimore.